All right, good morning. Today is Tuesday, September twenty first, twenty twenty one. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID nineteen, the board is using a WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you'd like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at nine AM, please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Members in the audience who have filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order received by the clerk, and online speakers will be taken in the order they appear in the WebEx program, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak and are having issues with the Raise Your Hand feature in WebEx, please physically raise your hand so that we may see you and wait to be recognized. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here. Here.
I do see him online. It looks like it's lighting up, but we're not able to hear him.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Our five, five here, unable to conduct business. So at this time, we'll move to the invocation. And do we have Pastor Andrew Cromer with us from the Quinian Church?
It does not look like it.
Okay, at this time, would you please rise for the invocation? No pressure.
Good morning, everyone. Sheriff Dave Robinson, please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this day you've given us and the Board of Supervisors in front of us. You know, we have a great Board of Supervisors who work really hard at everything, and we appreciate everything they do and the enlightenment they give us. Thank you for the county employees who've all come back to work and are working through this pandemic, continuing to work through the pandemic, and pour their heart and soul in everything that happens around here. Thank you for the success the last, at least, week so far on the big fires occurring in California. I know we have a bunch more, and we'd really appreciate any additional help you can give us there. And Lord, just please bless everyone in moving forward so we can heal some wounds that have occurred in the past and move forward in the future. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the flag. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, without any end.
All right, at this time, we'll move to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction. The board, two minutes are allowed for each comment.
I do not have any speaker cards, but I understand that Sonya Bougaye, Dave Robinson, and Keith Fagundes are here to speak, so whoever wants to go first?
I want to follow him. Sonya Bougaye, Human Services Agency Director. I wanted to inform your board that this week is our last week of a C four eligibility system. We have been in C four for the past twelve years, and on Thursday, the system goes down. We are going to be without any eligibility system on Friday, so I'm hoping public out there really pretends it's a long weekend or Christmas. And then we're dark on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And on Monday, we are going to, along with thirty-eight other counties, be on the new Cal-Saw system. So this is California's way of moving into a single eligibility system statewide. It'll be thirty-nine counties and LA, so in some ways, this is a huge deal for our county, and in some ways, I'm hoping it's completely seamless to the public. What it means to the public is we have about fifty-seven thousand people receiving benefits through our department, either Medi-Cal, CalFresh, CalWorks, or Foster Care, A to Adoptions. From the public perspective, on Friday, the benefit cards, whether they're Medi-Cal big cards, if you're going to a doctor's office, or EBT cards, they're going to be usable. This should not be visible. However, if you walk into our office, we can't check the systems. We can't. Our call center is not going to be operational. We're going to be doing just emergency benefits only. People can apply. We're going to be back to pen and paper. So hopefully, we really do not have people walking in on Friday. On Monday, we're back up with a new system. We're going to have about two months of ongoing transition activities because this is going to be a whole system, but it's really this week that's most impactful. We're going to be working over the weekend to prep for the transition and do some last-minute training, but hopefully, from a public perspective, this is not going to be visible. We are working with our community-based organizations because the public-facing system is also going to be different, but we've sent materials. We're going to have some training sessions, so lots of activities over the next couple of months, but hopefully, nothing too significant that we aren't ready for. Want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that it's still in the county's control because, you know, you look at the things like ADD that are train wreck. I'm glad we're still have some input in that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. Briefly, I wanted to talk about you have a closed session item on unrepresented management. And as I was reading the agenda this morning, I just wanted to provide a quick, quick update. I am not part of unrepresented management, so I'm not speaking for myself here. Just, I want to make that super clear. I'm not part of that group. When the salary study occurred, you know, everybody had an adjustment that occurred. Well, since then, unrepresented management across the county have missed out on some raises that other county employees have received, which has created a compaction issue. And so I only have, you know, what's in front of me for my department, but I imagine that this goes across the board. The CEO, Ed Hill, has been provided a copy. I believe all of you have been provided a copy of just the example in my organization. And so I just wanted to thank the board because that's really important that you do have that on the agenda today. And I know with the settlement of at least three contracts, you know, the vast majority of employees have settled now. And so I appreciate that that's on the agenda today, and you guys taking a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Keith Fagundes, DA's office. I wanted to give you another update. I skipped the last couple of weeks because of the volume that you had last week. But in the last couple of weeks, we were able to clear out more jury trials. We convicted a rapist. We were able to sentence the murderer of Melanie Pate, twenty-six years to life. And this week, we have another major financial crimes case that was able to get a jury. So we are still struggling getting enough people present to serve jury duty. So if anybody's listening and you get a summons, please be happy about serving in that way. Additionally, to dovetail what Dave mentioned is that I know our prosecutors have a closed session with you all today. I hope that you heed that, that offer. We lost another outstanding employee as of the first of October, who's leaving, and he cited not just the pay scale compared to other counties, but he unfortunately cited the fact that his income here as a licensed attorney after graduating college doesn't cover his living expenses in Kings County. And I just recently noticed that the rent here in Kings County is off the charts. And for two bedrooms, people are paying eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars a month, which is more than nearly half of the actual salary for even a entry-level attorney. So we thank you for considering that this morning in closed session. And I hope that you, that there's some good negotiations that go back and forth so we can really make Kings County the safe place that it's always been. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last check. Any further public comment requested? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Oh, there he is.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. Just want to give you a little update on your, on your fire department. All of our personnel are returning from Dixie and the Caldo fires. We're going to go through a little service period with, with the apparatus and then put them back in the system to see where they end up. They'll probably more than likely end up in Delary County on the complex, the windy incident up there. Dozer Tender Nine is still at the Monument Fire, which is in Northern California. Expected to be released on Friday. We'll bring it back, darken it for a couple of days to do some service on it, and then put it back in the system, and we'll see where it goes. So that's your update. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move to item three, which is approval of minutes. And three A is a report out on closed session from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one item to report out. Your board voted Diane Freeman to serve as the interim county council, taking effect on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at thirteen thousand dollars per month salary. It was a four-oh vote with Supervisor Valley absent. That's all that I have to report on.
That's very good, thank you. We're moving now to item three B, which is approval of the minutes of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Regular meeting. Word, which pleasure. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
We're still having audio issues with hands. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, we have four in favor and see them trying again. Supervisor Valley.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what's going on.
There you are.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. Your vote?
I vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have five in favor. Motion carries. And now we'll move to item four, which is a consent calendar. Word. Pleasure.
Approved, approved, because they counter represented.
Okay.
Nev seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll now move to item five, which is regular agenda item. Starts with public health.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Darcy Pickens, Public Health. As flu season fast approaches, I would like to start my report by reminding everyone, whoa, the simple steps we can all take to protect ourselves from communicable diseases. Frequently wash your hands for twenty seconds or more. Do not touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Stay home if you are sick. Wear a face mask to protect those most vulnerable or unvaccinated around you. And finally, get vaccinated. In addition to COVID nineteen vaccines, we will see flu shots becoming more widely available over the next few weeks, and encourage everyone to get a flu shot as soon as you are able to this year. Also, a reminder, our daily numbers are available on our website. We continue to have ongoing communication with the hospital on their resource requests and daily status. Regionally, hospital admissions in med surg and ICU remain high and continue to put strain on the hospital system, including here in our local hospital. As of September nineteenth, seven point one percent of staffed adult ICU beds were available in the region. As of September twentieth, the local hospital had sixty-four patients in med surg and twelve in the ICU. Of those admitted, forty-four are Kings County residents. Since July first, unvaccinated COVID patients have accounted for ninety percent of admissions. Ten percent of those hospitalized have been vaccinated. Central California Emergency Medical Services Agency, EMSA's assess and refer policy remains in place in Kings, Delary, Fresno, and Madera Counties. As you recall, this policy directs paramedics and EMTs to refer patients to urgent care or their private provider if, after a full assessment, the patient exhibits no emergent signs, no emergent conditions, excuse me, that would require immediate transport to the emergency room. Our PPE status has not changed. We are still maintaining a sixty-day supply of PPE for our healthcare facilities. The mobile testing site schedule for this week is on our website, and testing demand remains high, but has appeared to level off some in the past week at approximately twenty-seven hundred tests. We remain committed to keeping testing readily available throughout the county, particularly in areas where healthcare access is a barrier. Though we're also working with Kings County Office of Education to encourage schools to offer testing onsite. We've been doing that since the start of mobile testing in twenty twenty, but the state has decided to prioritize rapid tests for the schools. So we're working with them on getting those systems up and running so they've got some more robust internal testing capacity as well. Some California counties are still reporting a shortage of testing kits and wait times as long as one week for testing appointments alone and then additional time for the test to be processed. As of right now, Kings County is not one of those counties experiencing this issue, but we continue to monitor our own volume of testing kits and supplies. We continue to experience a turnaround time of approximately seventy-two hours for test process by the state and private labs. We had five hundred and three new cases last week, a slight decrease from the two weeks prior, bringing our new case count since the start of the current surge to five thousand and thirty-three new cases. In this past week, cases among the zero to eleven age group have continued to increase slightly, though right now, it looks like we may not be seeing the more dramatic increase that we saw in recent weeks. That remains to be seen, but that appears to be the trend at this point. All other age groups remain pretty consistent in terms of cases. Our Delta variant case count has increased to one hundred and forty-six, though, as you know, we believe this number is unreported as the state struggles to keep up with identifying variant cases. Currently, there are sixty thousand five hundred and seventy-three reported cases of the Delta variant in California. Last week, public health administered three hundred and eighty-seven vaccines, which is just slightly higher than the average of the previous, or the four weeks prior. The Health Department continues to administer the additional third-dose vaccine for immunocompromised individuals, and we continue to have appointment and walk-in availability. The FDA met Friday to begin deliberation on whether to approve a booster dose of the Pfizer vaccine. So this is not for immunocompromised individuals. This is for everyone else who received the COVID nineteen original vaccine series. The initial recommendation for a booster, a Pfizer booster dose, was granted only for those sixty-five and older and for people whose jobs put them at high risk for complications from COVID nineteen. So Pfizer sought blanket approval for a booster. They did not receive that at this point, only those sixty-five and over and those at higher risk due to their occupation. The next step is that the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, ASIP, will review that recommendation. They're scheduled to meet this week, September twenty-second and twenty-third. If approval is granted at that time, California is expected to also grant approval shortly thereafter. With this last round with immunocompromised individuals, California came in about a day later with their safety review. If approval is granted at that, oh, I'm sorry. The Health Department has vaccine available and has been actively preparing to increase staffing in the event that booster demand increases patient volume in clinics significantly, which is what we expect to see. We continue to add pop-up and mobile vaccine locations as staffing allows with events booked into October at this point. So far, Kings County providers have administered one hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-four vaccines to county residents, with ten thousand and twenty-four partially vaccinated residents, fifty thousand two hundred and sixteen fully vaccinated residents. Our current breakthrough rate remains at one percent of our vaccinated population, indicating the vaccine is working as intended. Finally, I want to take a moment to just remind everyone that the severe illness from, that severe illness from this virus that has reached so much havoc on all of our lives over the past year and a half is now largely preventable through vaccination. Continued spread of this virus can be minimal. We can get there. We still may have the opportunity to avoid a severe winter surge. We have ample evidence that vaccination is safe, effective, and widely available in Kings County. So please consider helping to protect your friends, neighbors, and loved ones from continued loss. Our department will continue doing all that we can to assist healthcare providers and members of the community in meeting the demand for ongoing COVID nineteen-related services. Our approach will continue to be layered, including, but not limited to, vaccination, testing, encouraging everyday measures that you can take to make a significant difference, such as hand hygiene, masking, and of course, isolating when you're sick. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions from board? I do have one. Just the hospitalized numbers that you gave us, you said ninety percent were unvaccinated, ten percent are vaccinated and in the hospital, and that leads to a one percent breakthrough. So that's just based on population base that you're coming up with the one percent?
Chairman, yes. So the breakthrough rate includes folks who were not hospitalized. So we're going to have a higher breakthrough rate among all vaccinated people, but that doesn't mean that all of them are hospitalized. So ten percent of the hospitalized population is vaccinated, but our overall breakthrough rate, considering all vaccinations and all cases, is one percent.
Okay, thanks. The numbers didn't add up for me there. Sorry, but I didn't do well on math.
Measures, so we're looking at two different populations there.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. And just checking Supervisor Valley, I don't see you with your hand raised. Do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ed Hill, County Administrative Officer. I want to also continue to provide the weekly update that we provide on our county staff. Since the outbreak, or excuse me, since the latest surge began in July, we've had a hundred and nine cases of Kings County employees. At this time, approximately fifty are quarantining or teleworking due to exposure. So we've had a significant amount return. In addition to that, I also wanted to report that we did change the reopen Kings link on our website to a scheduled vaccination link as the reopen Kings site is no longer valid due to the blueprint being expired. And with the possible surge of appointments for boosters, we want to give everybody the opportunity to use that link as well to access the state's online scheduling system.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on that information? All right, well, been a tough day here. We are, we are to board member announcements and reports. Supervisor Valley.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're good?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Supervisors are nets.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the groundbreaking for the remodel project to create Housing and Rehabilitation Center for Youth in Kings County occurred, and hopefully, in a year and a half, fifteen months or so, that facility would be opened and staffed and ready to go. The CART meeting was moved to enable our city representatives to attend the California League of Cities Conference this week, and so we met a week early. And the purchase of a CNG bus was approved, the Gillick, as well as some temporary fair modifications to try to increase ridership. We are going to try to reimage transit, and that was a discussion, and put some money towards a little bit more of the Uber technology to try to get transportation a little bit more into what our consumers need and to have maximum efficiency in operation. The seasonal passes continue to be very, very popular and used countywide, and we also received that, those statistics as well. And so we're kind of wrapped up CART. Association government's the same thing. We moved up a week early to allow the city representatives to attend their conference. All of the financials and updates to Caltrans projects, both in Kings County and in Fresno County. One issue, the Stratford Bridge replacement. The alternative route is still under consideration. As you can imagine, there aren't too many routes around that Stratford Bridge when you take that offline to replace that deck. And so Caltrans hasn't approved twenty-second or the Avonel cutoff, and so that might mean the alternative route might be all the way to one ninety-eight to two sixty-nine back to I five. So still under considerations, but nothing has been formalized yet. So CART, CAG, Association governments is also adding to staff members this week. The fiscal person is coming online as well as a planner, and so hopefully, that'll take some of the burden off of the staff that has been doing double and triple duty the last couple of months. And the Washington DC Virtual Outreach Program continues tomorrow with a full schedule, and then that'll wrap up for this, for this year. CalViva Finance and Commission Meeting took place on Thursday. Many of the challenges of COVID have reduced revenues, especially in the rental properties, as well as some of the interest rates have fallen, and so... and, and, and so our, uh, some of our income is down, uh, due to increased enrollment and actions, uh, by the state, uh, to prevent disenrollment, uh, of, of health plans. Revenue ended up being pretty, 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 uh, even. The, um, we, we are a little bit concerned in the future when, uh, some of those, uh, governor mandated programs of, of disenrollment and some of the changes, um, and so we are a little bit concerned about market share in the future, uh, but we continue to serve, uh, people and programs and, and, uh, the medical community in the, in the meantime, uh, through this pandemic era. What, one thing I was surprised about from the Madera side is that many people weren't getting the vaccine because their kids weren't, were not able to get vaccinated, so it was, it's kind of nice to be following the story that, um, they're going to reduce that immunization down to five years old, uh, smaller dosage, and hopefully address some of the concerns of some of those, uh, Madera families, because one of, one of the things that was shared at the meeting is that some, some parents are reluctant to get the vaccine because their children aren't, aren't able to get the vaccine, and I, I'd never heard that before, even at the public policy meeting a couple of weeks ago, so we're, we're, we're looking at that. Um, also, the Kings County Homeless Subcommittee had a meeting on Friday talking about shelter replacement. Uh, uh, hopefully a construction management will help us find a spot and, uh, review some of the parcels, parcels that have been under consideration and as well as, uh, hopefully expand the view and find possible locations. Uh, West Hills, uh, College Volleyball continues to, uh, or opened up this year's season at home. Um, unfortunately, West Hills is not allowing spectators into the arena, uh, but the players are playing, coaches are coaches, uh, coaches are coaching, and the officials are calling the games, and I'm still messing up the names, so we're doing all right. Uh, there are just fewer people to hear. Uh, Lomar Raceway was busy with races, only forty-five cars attended, uh, only four more race dates, um, you know, in this season. Uh, the Budweiser Grand Prix, uh, will take place on October ninth, along with, uh, three days of racing, October fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth for the Cal Cup races, so. Uh, Roots and Blues was very, uh, busy. Uh, it was a beautiful evening to be outside at Civic Park. Um, and, uh, it's, it's good to see everybody out, great music, great time, and because the races started an hour early and got done two hours earlier, uh, we were able to do double duty and watch that and then get home and catch the Fresno State game, so worked out pretty well. Uh, yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative, uh, had twenty-two participants, and, uh, Nathan Olson, as chair, um, is, is getting pretty busy, so I want to congratulate Sonya for taking, uh, over as, uh, chair. Um, Jeff Gardner is, is the vice chair, and I think those will be, uh, be, uh, uh, coming forward in, in October. Uh, we continue to talk about affordable housing developments, uh, Avonel homeless, uh, resources, contact information to help out with them, and then, um, housing resources, legal, uh, uh, issues, uh, kind of came up, so we talked about that for a little bit too, and, and talking about the legal side of it. Um, also, a couple of traffic accidents on Highway forty-one in Stratford area, one in the afternoon, one in the morning, two different intersections, both caused by drivers driving too fast and not paying attention. Um, need to slow down, watch your driving, arrive to your destination safely. Um, I have contacted, uh, Caltrans to, again, once again, look at the traffic, uh, accident studies. Um, I haven't, I, uh, to be honest with you, I've only got one speeding ticket in my life, but I would kind of like to see a double fine area, uh, through that area, because I think what's going to happen is now that the, uh, barrier has been put up on the forty-one segment between Excelsior and Elkhorn, uh, the frustration is just going to be pushed south, and so people are going to be in more of a hurry, more trying to get where their destination is faster, uh, not paying attention to the driving, and I think it's just going to move it from that line segment south down into that, especially that one ninety-eight to I five quarter. And I really think, um, you know, CHP should do, uh, higher level enforcement and maybe even a double fine zone in that area for speed and unattentiveness, because there's still a lot of people, cell phones, um, you know, I, I haven't shaved in years, but I seen the guy the other day shaving, you know, going down the road, and so, you know, I can, I can see there's a lot of distractions, but, uh, unfortunately distractions cause accidents and accidents, uh, sometimes result in death and, and a lot of, uh, uh, property damage. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Wow, that rivals Paul Harvey's report right there.
I know, right there, huh? We covered all gambits. We did it all. We, local, state, yeah, federal, yeah, we hit all, we hit all lines of government.
Yeah.
Three of the day I was by there last week, and it was a forty-minute wait, between nine o'clock and quarter to ten, quarter, quarter to ten, ten to ten.
Yeah.
Forty-minute wait, just holding up traffic both ways.
Yeah, there's, there, that, uh, forty-one takes a lot of traffic now. There's a lot of traffic there, um, unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, they are building a gas station mini-mart. Unfortunately, it's on the west side of forty-one, and I know when I was a kid, we were riding with a bike when Ed Souza was over there, you know, it's going to be dangerous for kids to, uh, cross that forty-one in the future, uh, because there's, um, you know, everybody wants a bridge, I want a subway, I want to be able to go underneath, I want a tunnel, I want to be like, uh, one-on-one in Pismo, I want to be able to go through, walk underneath the highway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisors, forgiveness.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, last week, Wednesday, I had KCAO, uh, meetings, and it was, it was good to see people coming back from meetings. We had, I think, about nine, nine or ten out of fifteen members back, and it was good to see them and discuss, more discussions over the stuff. And then, um, on Thursday, I had the Commission on Aging, also same scenario, uh, want people participate, this guy didn't, I'm just good to see one another. Hope it continues, just along with.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing.
Joe covered most of it.
I know. We, we were, we, uh, there were several of them that we were at the same event, so.
All right. Uh, I just have one issue, one item. Uh, the Air District had our monthly, uh, meeting last week, and, uh, one of our, our programs that's used by, uh, a lot of folks in the, in the region, um, especially those that, that have, uh, financial challenges, is to drive clean in San Joaquin. Uh, it's, uh, you know, if you're having difficulties, can't afford to get your vehicle smogged, um, we provide funding to, uh, grants to, uh, assist in that effort, and, uh, you know, we just, uh, received another eight point four million, and, uh, you know, we have an association with Valley Cleaner Now, so if you know anyone that, uh, you know, needs this assistance, it's, uh, it's available, and typically they'll have events, uh, throughout the district, which reaches from Bakersfield, uh, to, uh, near Sacramento, and, uh, typically it's, it occurs out at, uh, West Hills College, and, um, you know, in the event that, um, they can't smog their vehicle, they also provide, uh, funding for, uh, families that, that can't afford new vehicles to actually purchase a vehicle for them, and, uh, so anyways, uh, some increased or additional funding for that. With that, we will move to, uh, Board Correspondents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For Board Correspondents have two items. Uh, Fish and Game Commission, uh, published notice of findings regarding the petition to list the Clara Hunts milk vet as endangered, uh, under the California Endangered Species Act. Uh, and then the Gambling Policy Advisor Committee is currently accepting applications for individuals interested in serving as a member of the Commission's Gaming Policy Advisory Committee, RCPAC. Uh, for upcoming, uh, meetings and events, uh, the Public Safety Luncheon has been postponed until September twenty twenty-two. The American Legion Post One Hundred Lemoore and the City of Lemoore, uh, presents Gold Star and Fallen Hero Families Memorial Tree Ceremony at Lemoore Veterans Park, Sunday, September twenty-sixth at two PM. Links for Life Pink Passion Picnic at Hanford Civic Auditorium, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one at ten thirty. The United Cerebral Palsy Central California Inaugural Cornhole Tournament at Hanford Civic Center Auditorium, October twenty-fourth from ten AM to eleven AM. For upcoming agenda items, Admin will be bringing the CSAC appointments next week. Behavioral Health has an agreement with the California Mental Health Services Authority. Health has three items, COVID nineteen Case Investigation and Prevention Services, WIC Contract Amendment, and of course, the COVID nineteen update. The Human Services Agency has two items, Homelessness Housing Assistance and Prevention Program Round Two Award Acceptance and Resolution authorizing the application for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. IT has the Kingsview Appeal, and then County Council will be bringing considerations and implementation of AB three, three sixty-one, which is a bill that goes into effect October first after the Governor's Executive Order this morning about telemeeting. That's all that I have for our Board Correspondents' upcoming meetings and, uh, upcoming agenda items.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move to item seven, which is, uh, Closed Session. We have numerous items to, uh, work through today. First is Conference with Labor Negotiator Meet and Confer, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Uh, and, uh, looks like Unrepresented Management is the single, uh, group on that list today. Uh, second, we have Significant Exposure to Litigation, two cases, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two, and the second is, uh, there's two cases in the, in that one, and then in the, uh, next, we have Significant Exposure to Litigation, one case, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two and three. Before we adjourn, we do have a, uh, special meeting this afternoon, uh, at one thirty, and, uh, that will, uh, deal with, uh, Personnel Matters, Government Code Section five four nine five, five, five four nine five seven, which is, uh, County Council, and also, uh, five four nine five seven, uh, Director of Finance for, uh, Public Employee Appointment. So with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there is an amendment for a, uh, fourth, uh, Closed Session item.
Very good. We have that. All right. Okay, and, uh, then one other item for that meeting at one thirty, uh, Significant Exposure to Litigation, one case, uh, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two E three. Uh, and again, that will be, uh, as added to the agenda this afternoon.
This morning.
Oh, this morning?
Correct. That's an amendment to this morning's Closed Session agenda.
Okay, and so when do you expect to, okay, got it, got it, got it, got it. All right, any further questions, uh, come forth this time? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Closed Session. Meeting adjourned.